Did we call ourselves to order yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're waiting for you.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay, today is December fifth, two thousand and thirteen. This is the Situate Planning Board. I need a motion to accept the hearing or to accept the minutes. The agenda, I'll get it.
Agenda? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight's, the first item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for an accessory dwelling special permit at thirty seven Otis Street. This was continued from November twenty fourth. We have, all four of the members will be voting, Eric will be voting to the extent that he comes. And what you need is, because it's a special permit, you need four out of the five votes. So if it looks like, it appears that you're not gonna get the four votes, then move after a continuous. I can, I can advise him of that.
Sure.
Procedure only.
Procedurely only. I think at the last meeting, there were some concerns about dimensions and sizes and percentages and that sort of thing. And I think, I think your homework assignment was to go meet with Laura as needed and meet with the building inspector and come back and tell us what the dimensions are so that we have a sense of that. Does that agree with what your homework assignment was?
Yes, when we have it, and we have copies.
Okay. So you met with Neil?
Thank you.
Um, he was shown this when we brought it to our.
Yeah, give me two, and I'll need one for Eric.
I think that's Eric there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is... This is the garage?
Yes.
That's the interior dimensions of the upstairs.
Okay. And what is the dimension of the house?
The outside?
Or the square footage of the house?
Sixteen.
Yeah, six.
Do we have that somewhere? We had that before, didn't we?
Yeah, we do, if you want it, we have it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the four hundred, seven hundred forty-two square feet is within the percentage allowable.
Well, it's, it's below seven fifty, so it's okay, so I didn't even look at the dimensions of the house.
Okay. Good point. So as I understand it, nothing has changed from what the original application was, you're still gonna come back up with this unit above of the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the renderings that we had before are exactly what's, what you're proposing to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Have any questions from the board?
I assume you did math.
Building permit to do the work, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So Neil will need to review it for egress and all of the other aspects of the building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Laura, you have?
Yeah, no, it, it looks fine, it adds up, and, you know, as long as they, as we tie the approval to this, I think it should be fine. I think the difference was going on the inside of the space as opposed to the outside of the space, so.
Okay, are there any questions from the public? Comments from the public? So what is the pleasure of the board?
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Do I get to read the motion?
You picked the seat.
No, actually, I was put here.
Well, that's probably why.
Holy cow. Okay. I move to make the following findings of fact concerning the accessory dwelling at thirty seven Otis Road. One, according to town of Situate assessor's records, the property at thirty seven Otis Road is owned by Charles P. Welch and Jacqueline E. Boudreau. Two, on June fourteenth, twenty thirteen, Mr. Welch and Ms. Boudreau applied for a special permit for a detached accessory dwelling above an existing garage at this property. Three, according to a sketch plan submitted by the applicants drawn to scale showing interior dimensions of proposed accessory dwelling, the floor area will be seven hundred and forty-two square feet. This is less than the seven hundred and fifty square feet maximum in the bylaw, so the area requirements of section five thirty point two F are met. The detached dwelling is also subordinate in size to the primary dwelling. Four, the property is located in the residential R three zoning district. The lot area is eleven thousand seventy square feet. The existing footprint of the home is proposed to be unchanged. The existing dwelling has four bedrooms. Proposed accessory dwelling on the second floor, the detached garage, will have two bedrooms. Five, the foundation plan shows a two-car detached garage. There appears to be adequate space to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Should the accessory dwelling not be occupied by a family member, additional parking may be required. Six, only one accessory dwelling is contained on the lot, and it appears to be a separate housekeeping unit. Seven, the proposed detached accessory dwelling appears to comply with required setback yard requirements and building height requirements. Per ends twenty-six feet eight inches, close per ends, for a primary structure according to the as-built foundation plan and the application. Eight, the new exterior stairs to provide for primary or secondary means of, of access for the accessory dwelling are located on the side... On the side of the side. Is that right?
Garage.
Yeah. On the side of the, the detached garage, complying with five thirty point two E of the bylaw. Nine, the applicant has, had, the applicants have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will live on the property. Ten, the application meets the standards of Situate zoning bylaw section five thirty for an accessory dwelling special permit.
That's the finding, all the findings of fact?
Those are the findings of fact.
They have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. The decision. I move to approve the accessory dwelling special permit for thirty seven Otis Road with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the building department, board of health, department of public works, fire department, water department, and other town agencies. Two, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to plans entitled, "Proposed Accessory Dwelling, The Welch Residence, Thirty Seven Otis Road, Situate, Mass., dated five sixteen two thousand and thirteen." Sheet A one showing first floor plan, second floor plan, side elevation, and front elevation. Okay, that was, that was the first drawing. The second drawing is foundation as-built plan, thirty seven Otis Road dated two six thirteen by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant Chuck Welch. And finally, a sketch plan provided by applicants showing interior dimensions of the accessory dwelling. That was the one that was handed out today. Three, the property at thirty seven Otis Road shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the existing dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit, dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and or square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. The number of bedrooms in a detached accessory dwelling is limited to two. Four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Five, the planning board will require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans in these conditions, pri, in these conditions prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the accessory dwelling. Six, no, on-street parking shall be permitted at any time. Construction vehicles and equipment shall not idle nor be parked, stored, loaded, or unloaded in the street. Seven, prior to filing for a building permit, the applicant should provide a site plan showing where the driveway has been constructed and where additional parking would be located in the event someone purchases the property who will not have a family member in the accessory dwelling unit. Eight, the special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within ninety days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Nine, the special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of this issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section nine. Ten, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. The special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this decision and its conditions. Eleven, the request of the planning board, and affi, at the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that either the primary or accessory unit is owner occupied. Finally, twelve, at each transfer of ownership of the property, a new affidavit that the owner resides on the property shall be provided to the planning board within thirty days of the transfer.
Questions, comments from the board? Motion to the board?
Would you that we grant from the special permit for the accessory dwelling thirty seven Otis Road?
Do I have a second?
Second.
With the conditions?
With everything I just read.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You got your four votes.
And if you guys can just sign, um...
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is supposed to be public hearing for eight o'clock. It being not quite eight. Do we have counting or minutes that we can do?
All right, here's the... It's just this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I move that we approve the bill payable to the American Planning Association for four hundred and forty dollars for membership dues for the town planner for two thousand and fourteen.
It's where the town has shared membership for the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hope you gotta sign it.
Oh, yeah, sign them out, sorry.
No minutes? No minutes?
I don't think we have any minutes.
I think we saved those for Richard anyway.
If you jump ahead to the site plan waiver.
That's right.
To the site plan waiver on Watch Hill?
Whatever you can knock out, we just leave three.
Yep.
We... We still have time before eight, so the next item that we'll handle is the site plan waiver for Enley School, forty-six Watch Hill Drive. Somebody here for that?
I don't know.
They might have waited till.
I'm, that's a guy might come. He didn't say if.
He might be waiting till nine oh five.
Well, he's probably waiting till nine oh five, but we can, if we get a chance, we'll go call him and tell him he doesn't have to show him unless you wanna wait for him.
Well, who's gonna explain to us?
Yeah, who's gonna?
Explain to us exactly what they were doing.
Yeah. What they're doing is, I don't know if you remember the, the house that was on Cornet Stetson Road that they purchased about, um, five years ago.
This is the one where they had, had previous, previous owner had given them permission to put the septic system on the property?
I think this is a different one.
Okay, this is the other house.
This is down in front?
This is down in front.
Okay.
It was owned by a couple named Kearns.
Okay.
Uh, the Enley School bought the house. They're using the main building as classroom space, and the house came with a little garage. The plan is to make that garage into a band practice room. They have told us that they're not increasing the number of students at all. They did give us numbers of students for, um, the board of health to check the septic system because that's something that, um, they've had, you know, they've had some issues with in the past, but everything works fine. So I don't think that's the reason why it can't be approved.
Does it, does it need any other safety, like fire protection or anything like that, as a change of use?
Anything like that, they'll, they'll get checked out before they get a building permit.
Okay.
Um, and we do require that, we didn't include that in the conditions, but we can add a condition that they have to meet all, um, you know, requirements of other town boards and departments.
Makes sense, anything I could do to move the tubas out of the house and in the barns would work. So any questions from the board?
They're not changing anything on the exterior.
No.
Change of use on the interior, right? Yeah.
We have a...
As long as everybody on the, on the building side says it's okay.
The third one down, uh, we had gotten a memo from Deborah Sullivan of the occupancy, but she sent us an email just before the meeting saying that she had gotten all the information she needed.
She was okay. 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 Therefore, I move that the planning board finds that the proposed site work or building work is minor in nature because there appears to be adequate parking in the nearby public parking lot and on front street? No, 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 no. This, this isn't working.
Let's, okay, that's not working.
You put it in front of me to read.
Sure, if I think I...
Well, I think we're to the point now where we really don't need them. Oh, okay.
There'll be no increase in the number of students at the school.
Okay. Okay. Let's try this again. I move that the planning board finds the proposed site work or building work is minor in nature because there will be no increase in students at the school. Period. And, no, comma, and to grant the site plan waiver for Enley School to convert an existing garage to a band room at forty-six Watch Hill Drive with the following conditions. One, construction shall be limited to renovation of an existing garage currently accessed from Cornet Stetson Road for the purpose of conversion to a band practice room. Two, construction shall comply with the improvement shown on elevation plan entitled Third View, Enley School Band Practice Classroom by Eck McNeely, Architect Incorporated, October twenty ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Three, construction must meet the requirements of all town boards and departments.
Discussion? Motion?
Move to approve as stated with the conditions that we just heard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, it's eight o'clock. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing, definitive subdivision plans of Blanchard Farms, Water Curtis Street. The applicant owner is Blanchard Farms LLC. So why don't you introduce yourself, introduce your team?
This is that last open lot over there, huh?
Yeah. Well, he's setting up, let me tell you the way we're gonna, we'll do this. One, he'll, though, the applicant will give an overview of the proj, project, current conditions, then what is proposed. At that point, we'll have comments from the town planner, questions from the board, and then we'll open it up to the public. Having said that, we know what the rules, procedure is.
Thank you.
Morris, start.
For, for the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering. With me tonight, the applicant Blanchard Farm LLC, represented by John Barry and John Tedeschi, the managers, and their attorney, Richard Henderson. This is a definitive subdivision project. We're seeking approval here for eleven single-family house lots off of a new cul-de-sac. The property's located at forty Curtis Street. Prior to our meeting with you, we have been before the conservation commission. They have determined that there are no wetlands on this property. We also held an informal, um, meeting at the public library about a month ago, and we invited all of the neighbors to attend. We had pretty good attendance at that meeting, we tried to incorporate some of their comments into this, we also brought them up to speed with what we were proposing. I'll start with the existing conditions of the site, shown on this plan here. The property line is shown in bold. It totals approximately seven and a half acres in size. Again, it's all upland area, there are no flood plains on this property, there are no endangered species mapped on this property, there are no tributaries mapped on this property. The property has frontage on Curtis Street, which is a public way to the east, is a public forty-five foot wide right-of-way. It's abutted around to the south, to the west, and to the east by residential property that is pretty much developed with single-family houses. The frontage along Curtis Street measures two hundred feet. It also provides access to an existing house on the property, the existing house right here, number forty, historic, it was constructed circa eighteen ninety-eight. Our proposal, which I'll get into, we are, we are keeping that house, we're not taking that house down as part of the project. Zoning wise, this is in a twenty thousand square foot zoning district, it's also located in the water resource protection district. Topography on the site generally slopes from Curtis Street as the high point, you're at elevation seventy-nine. It generally slopes in a northwest direction, the low point on the site is this back corner at elevation fifty-six. The majority of the site has already been cleared. Right now, you'll see the tree line, this is actively used as a corn, a cornfield. So probably three months out of the year, there's corn growing and being cultivated, the remainder of the time, that is barren soil. If you went out there today, it's barren soil. Obviously, immediately around the house is the existing lawn for the house, and there's a service driveway off of Curtis Street for the house.
Craig, what's to the east?
To the east.
Yeah, you, you left that one out.
Okay, to the, to the east, this side, these are all single-family residences.
Well, no, to the...
To the north?
Is that the north?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's north here.
Immediately to the north is, is a vacant parcel that's owned by one of the butters on Curtis Street.
Okay.
Again, it's kind of field and woods area, but it's, that is abutted by residential again. All of the soils on the site, you see, we've done extensive soil testing, all witnessed by the board of health. We took this project to the board of health meeting, and it was reviewed and approved at their meeting. The perk test ranged generally from five minutes an inch up to sixty minutes an inch. Groundwater on an average is up three feet below the ground surface. Soils were loamy sands and sandy loams, all classified as suitable for development. The proposed site, we'll flip over to the color rendering here. In general, we're coming in off of Curtis Street just to the south of the existing house with a new roadway. The new roadway comes down to a cul-de-sac at the end. It's approximately six hundred feet in length to the cul-de-sac. That provides access to a total of eleven houses, one being the existing house, and then two, ten new lots immediately surrounding that. Utilities, we're proposing onsite septic systems for all of the houses, there is no sewer available at this location. All of the septic systems have had a total of four perk tests and observation holes in their locations. Municipal water, we're proposing a municipal water connection for the project. We have a looped eight-inch ductile iron main coming down off of Curtis Street. We've conducted hydrant flow testing, witnessed by the water department on Curtis Street, and provided the results, which are suitable for this project. We're proposing a new fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac. Since this submittal, we've spoken with the fire chief, we're gonna be adding a second fire hydrant as part of our revised plans. Subsurface electric service throughout the project, and then drainage utility for the project. We have onsite drainage, roof dry wells on each of the lots attached to the roof areas, and then the drainage is primarily broken up into three different areas. We'll, we'll talk further about that in a minute, but the three areas being that the top hundred feet of road or so is trapped through catch basins and treated through an infiltration system here, subsurface. The second two hundred feet of road is captured. This is an infiltration basin here, and then the remainder of the road travels to a shallow grass swale, an onsite constructed wetland, and an infiltration basin at the back of the property. The roadway design, we've... We've provided a profile that meets the requirements. The roadway, the right-of-way width is forty-two feet wide, we've proposed twenty-four feet wide of pavement. We're coming in generally at the intersection here with a one percent grade, transitioning through a vertical curve to a four point eight percent grade, transitioning into a one percent grade. So it's a relatively flat grade along the fronts of these houses, and a relatively flat grade at the entrance along Curtis Street. With, with that road construction, we are hoping to get your input on a requested waiver. The waiver we're gonna be asking for would be a K-Pod burn in lieu of granite curving throughout the project. We would provide granite curving at the throat stones for the catch basins and at the enters, entrances, the curb radiuses off of Curtis Street. We've looked at the site distances along Curtis Street, I'll certainly provide a site distance triangle, the site distance required was two hundred feet, that is attainable. Curtis Street is a very straight street at this location. There's not significant vegetation on either side of this entrance, it's mostly lawns up and down the street, so site distance should not be an issue here. Along the road, we've also proposed, you can see in gray, we have a new five-foot-wide sidewalk that comes in and services down to the cul-de-sac, and it connects to Curtis Street. There is a sidewalk on the opposite side of Curtis Street that you can cross to. All of the houses have their own individual driveways and curb cuts off the new road, there are no common driveways with this proposal. In looking at the drainage, we talked about the grade here for the profile, what you'll notice with the profile is, is that we're maintaining what the existing grade is at the top of the site here. But as you transition through the vertical curve and down into this field location, we're requiring fill. The road on average through this area is approximately four feet higher than what the existing grade is out there today. That fill then transitions onto the lots. The lots here, what you'll see is, you'll see that lots two, three, four, two, three, four, and five generally are what I would call a conventional foundation. You're walking out the front door and walking out the backyard at the, the first floor elevation. Lots six, seven, eight, nine, ten... Lots six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 are walkout lower levels, a walkout basement. By having the road up at four feet, what we've done is we've graded all of the front yards on both sides of the street to pitch toward the roadway. That way, we can capture runoff from the driveways, from the lawns, and treat it through the roadway drainage systems where it gets picked up. The drainage, to speak just a little bit further about it, we've documented in a drainage report with our stormwater calculations how the three different systems are designed. The first system here, this is a series of deep-sump-hooded catch basins. We have a storm scepter particle separator, and then these are subsurface leaching chambers with crushed stone around them. It, it handles the infiltration credit that we need for the project. It makes it so we don't have a detention basin at the entrance of the site. We had relatively good perk tests and relatively deep groundwater table up at the top here. This is the highest point on the site as well. So, it made sense here for us to trap the first 100 feet and try to infiltrate it at that location. The second system is an infiltration basin, an open-air system. Again, we've provided catch basins out in the street through a particle separator to a discharge to this basin. This basin here, as designed, should drain within 72 hours. The drainage is into the ground through the bottom of the basin. It also has an outlet pipe and an outlet control structure to a level spreader along the back, the back edge, the bottom of the berm here. When we analyzed this site, and this, this level spreader is what we're also gonna propose at this back location. When we analyzed the site drainage-wise, there's really two locations where runoff is going to in the existing condition. One location, we're trapping water and bringing it this way, but you'll also notice that the site does slope very gently in a northerly direction. We're at elevation 62 here, down here at this far corner, again, 56. So, we've analyzed two design points, one design point here, another design point at that low corner of the site. The third to 10, the third basin that we have captures from approximate station 2 plus 50 to the end, and what it does is it captures it through catch basins, a drainage manhole, and it discharges it right here into a shallow grass swale. That grass swale then runs along the property line in an easement between lots five and six, and it, it ends up in a forbay, a sediment forbay here. Once it overtops the sediment forbay, it's into our constructed stormwater wetland. What we've provided is, we've provided a wetland that would be planted, which will serve for nutrient removal of the stormwater, which is what we're going for, especially in the Water Resource Protection District. Once that stormwater pocket wetland would fill up, it overtops into an infiltration section of the basin right here, where stormwater is either infiltrating into the ground or, again, we have an outlet control pipe with a level spreader across the back. All of the systems we've documented in the calculations is having less runoff in the post-condition than in the pre-condition. One of the unique things with this project is that you have to realize in the existing condition, we're talking about a barren site, a majority of the site is barren. The simple conversion to grass lawn service cuts the runoff curve number down, as water is now retained on the lots to feed the vegetation on all of the lots. We're talking significant area in addition to holding back water in the roof drywall systems and the infiltration basin at the top. We've provided an operation and maintenance plan. We'll be establishing and submitting homeowners' association documentation regarding the responsibilities for maintenance of this system. We also had a landscape plan submitted. Our landscape architect, Scott Ritter, put together typical street tree plantings, entrance way plantings at the entrance along Curtis Street, as well as specified planting, seed mixes for both basins, as well as the plantings around the wetland pockets, and he included the stormwater wetland itself, a detail of what plantings would be involved in that for handling the stormwater. We've read through the, the comment letters that were submitted. We're, we're ready to hear additional comments, and we certainly have a couple questions on the comment letters, and we're hoping to address those this evening as well. But I think at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over for any additional comments or questions.
You want to say anything, Richard?
No. Just a couple of comments. There are some waivers that are needed. Greg alluded to one for the granite curb. The board really hasn't received any requests for waivers, so that needs to be provided by the applicant. There also is a reduction in the radius of the cul-de-sac. Oh, okay, I'm, I'm just gonna...
Let Laura make her point here.
Okay, yep.
Okay, thanks.
One thing that a lot of times the board has gotten when the cul-de-sac is, is a little bit smaller than usual is a diagram showing that a fire truck can make it around the cul-de-sac, which the Traffic Rules Committee generally wants to see that. The granite curb is maybe a little different situation in this subdivision than some of the others that, that the board has looked at recently, because this one is really more densely developed. They're 20,000-square-foot lots, so there's, there's more activity, more cars and so on, within a shorter, shorter road distance. As far as stormwater management, it looks like the, the applicant's engineer has made some good efforts to do some low-impact development techniques. There is some infiltration that's gonna take place and some stormwater treatment, and those are all good within the Water Resource Protection District in particular. At the same time, there's a lot of fill on this site, which may complicate the overall drainage situation. In a couple of locations, it appeared to be about six feet around lots, I believe it's around lot 10. So, there are a couple of places where there's, you know, really a significant, significant amount of fill, and it's not just that it's in one spot. You know, of course, it has to be spread throughout a fairly significant area. And the concern is that the lots on the backside, the west side of the development, backing up to Whittier, the Whittier Drive properties, have a fairly steep slope going down, and hopefully the trees can be retained that are at the back there, and the consulting engineer can also review that whole situation to make sure that, that those properties aren't gonna get additional stormwater than what they had before. Some of the, the drainage structures also are very close to the adjacent lots, Parcels A and Parcels B. Their drainage structures are, the, the grading is within five feet, I think, on, on the one on the north side, on Parcel A. There isn't any development adjacent to that now, but, you know, possibly there could be at some point in time through, you know, possibly a common driveway or some, you know, similar arrangement. So, you'd, you'd hate to have a situation where development in that location would be impacted by the steep slope and, you know, runoff. So, those are a couple of, of issues there. The level spreaders in particular seem to be, one of them seems to be fairly close to the property line, and there's a question about how one would get in to maintain the level spreaders and also the infiltration basins. The access seems to be a little bit unclear. The initial part of the access is shown through an easement. The board did get a comment from the consulting engineer about whether that, that access would really be suitable for the kinds of maintenance vehicles that would have to go down there. But then, you know, once the access easement gets to the end, it's a little bit unclear how it would get all around the detention, the infiltration basin, and how you would, you know, how you would get those vehicles to access in there, and particularly down to the level spreaders. So, a question about that. And because the site is largely cleared, whatever landscaping occurs is, is gonna be beneficial. It's gonna, you know, make the whole area look a little bit nicer. The existing trees that are out there, I think there's one 30-inch tree that's on the site that hopefully can be preserved. And in general, you know, whatever vegetation is out there would be, would be good to preserve. Just one additional comment, I think for the driveway for 40 Curtis Road, there's a waiver that's gonna be needed because the subdivision road is really too close to that driveway. You really would ideally want to have it come off the subdivision road, but I think that the reason that wasn't done was because there's some nice plantings there, and if that's the case, then, you know, that can be mentioned in the waiver. You know, that might be a mitigating, you know, reason to have, to have the driveway not come off the subdivision road. But in general, with those waivers, there should be a public benefit. So, you know, that's something that, you know, the board will, will wanna consider.
Did we get an update from the peer review?
Yep, I think Pat's here.
Pat, why don't you tell the world who you are and go through your review?
All right, um, excuse me. Pat Brennan with the Henry Engineers. I reviewed the, uh, the plans and drainage counts and submitted a letter to the board back on, on the 13th. A lot of my comments have already been brought up tonight by either Laura or Greg. So, I'll just go through those really quickly and kinda update you to where we are. My first one was about the stopping site distance, and Greg said that they would provide that information on the plan. My second one was the same, that Laura had mentioned about the diameter of the circle for the turnaround being 84 feet versus 100 feet. My, my, my third one was the proximity of that driveway to the road as Laura had just mentioned. The fourth was about the requirement for granite curbing throughout the project and the fact that they're gonna give a waiver for Cape Cod berms. There's a section in the rules and regs, 7.6.1, that requires easements to be adjacent to, to one side of the lot line. What they've done, they've pretty much centered the easements on, on lot lines, both here and right here. So, that may need to be a waiver as well. There's, there's a requirement in the rules and regs that the entire width of the roadway plus four feet to either side of it, down four feet, has to be frost-free material, so if I see any material pre-graining. Their, their cross-section shows it just under the roadway, so we've asked them to show that extending out that four feet. DPW had that same comment, actually. And if the Cape Cod berms are allowed by waiver, we've asked that the detail be changed because the rules and regulations require that Cape Cod berms be placed with both the binding courses and the wearing course, and that's just an edit to their, to their detail there. Into the drainage and stormwater management on this... The, the time of concentration flow paths on their pre- and post-development drainage area plans, a little difficult to follow, so I just want them to kinda clarify those for us a little bit so we can review those a little bit better. They had one test pit at the subsurface infiltration system up front. They had one test pit there that went down, went down about three feet below the proposed bottom of that. Stormwater management standards, which are referenced in your rules and regulations, require a mounding analysis if the groundwater is within four feet with that. So, what I'm suggesting is, it's pretty deep to go down that deep right now during construction. They dig a test pit there to make sure that we have that four feet of separation there. And two feet of separation is typically required for any other infiltration structure or storage structure, and it appears that most of the roof recharge areas at the elevations that they're set at now and nearby test holes, they're not gonna have that two feet of separation. There is another plan that says that they're to do a test pit at each one of those locations during construction, but I just want everybody to be aware that that will likely change a lot of the grading around the houses that they show on these plans. Probably gonna come up a little bit higher, 'cause they're gonna have to lift those up. As Laura had mentioned, this, we need to have access to these basins to maintain them, and particularly this one, they're showing easement here. There's the easement that the swale falls in, and then you can see the bump out here is the actual easement. It's just off the corner of this house here, and it's, it's just, it's real, between the house, the swale and that house, it's gonna be difficult to get machines down in there to maintain that. And this is a very steep slope coming down with the proposed grading here to get down to that one as well, so that's a little bit difficult to, to do that. I'm asking them to put inspection ports on the subsurface systems so that in the future we can tell whether or not that's working. The rules and regulations require the drainage pipes to have gasketed joints. I'm just asking them to note that on their details. The, the level spreaders, I've asked them to provide some additional information on how those are working, 'cause the way that they modeled their basins, which would free discharge through those pipes, well, those pipes are going into a crushed stone bed, which has to overflow and then go over ground, so it's gonna be a tailwater effect. So, with a free discharge, you know, the levels and the ponds get up so high, when you have it with a tailwater effect, the levels and the ponds are gonna come, come up higher, and there may be some overflowing. So, I just want them to try to model that a little bit better so we can tell exactly what's gonna happen in that situation. Greg had mentioned about the, the granite curb. I'm actually gonna put those around catch basins and at the radio at Curtis Street. The, their operation and maintenance plan is, it's actually, it's very good, except that they mentioned the Conservation Commission is, is, to make the plan available, the records available to CONCOM. They don't have to go to conservation, they don't need a permit from Conservation for this, so I'm just suggesting that they change that verb, which should be town and constituent officials, so that they can provide it to you or building inspector, anybody else that wants to look at it. My two water system comments Greg had hit on, I was suggesting consultation with the fire chief to see if an additional hydrant would be required, and they said that they're gonna put another one in. Down with my general comments, the landscape plan, so that they, I didn't see the landscape plan, so I, I just asked for one. The rules and regulations require monuments or bounds at all changes in direction around the perimeter of the whole project, so I've asked that they either show those on the plan or request a waiver from that requirement. And then, one last comment was that there's a little bit of grading for this drainage parcel, which goes onto this lot. That lot is owned by the same entity right now, so it's not an issue, but I was thinking maybe they could just tighten that up so they didn't need to grade over onto that property as well. And that was pretty much it at this point.
Okay, good write-up.
Thank you.
Questions on board, or comments on the board?
Question on the road, is it intended to be a private road?
I think the intent is to construct it to a standard that you could apply to the town for acceptance. That's what's recommended by Al Banger and his correspondence. We're certainly putting the homeowners' association together so that the maintenance is on the homeowners' association up until that time.
So, the road with the exception of the width is the subdivision standards?
Even, even the width of the road is to subdivision standards. The only, the only waiver, I think, on the road itself is going from the Cape Cod berm to the granite curbing, or vice versa. We would like to ask the board, though, if they would consider another waiver, and that would be reducing the pavement width of the road. The pavement right now is proposed in accordance with your regulations at 24 feet. Would you consider anything less than that, possibly down to 20 feet? It would all reduce the impervious surfaces, it would reduce the runoff... It would all reduce the impervious surfaces, it would reduce the runoff. Twenty feet of pavement with a foot and a half of Cape Cod berm on each side is effectively twenty-three feet in width if you had two vehicles that were, were wide passing each other. It might be a way to shave off some impervious surface in the lot.
Well?
Um, when you do the site distance evaluation, it shows that there should be a mention of vertical as well as horizontal distances. I think that's a pretty steep hill coming up from Country Way. So, that would be more of my concern than, than the horizontal aspect of that measurement. I guess also the, the two drives or the drive and the road within, that looks like less than twenty feet of each other is a bit of a concern. It may be that the plantings are, you know, sort of dictating that, but there might be another way to do it. The other issues are most of what I was kind of wondering about have been addressed. It would be, I guess we've just heard that those slopes behind the houses that back up the Whittier Drive, they even be steeper if the houses themselves have to be up in the air a little bit more. That's a concern frankly, and you're, you're creating runoff there even though it's going from earth to grass just by the, by the contouring itself. It seems to me you're creating some runoff that if not more is certainly faster than it might be today. So, I'd want, I'd want to think about that or have you to sort of address it, settle my mind on that, on that point. And certainly during construction, when the fills in and the seeding and the, the grass hasn't taken yet, that's going to have to be a very critically monitored situation in terms of your, your self-preservation and our own control.
Can I ask another question while I was just thinking about, building on what Bob said here? How do all of those adjacent parcels, do they drain into this parcel?
No, right now-
Is there runoff that comes off of those into this parcel?
No, right now Curtis Street really serves as the high point and everything drains toward the Whittier Drive project. You'll see, this is the pre-development subcatchment plan we had, you know, effectively taking the, the ridge line of the houses on Curtis Street. Their backyards on Curtis Street drain onto our site. Our site certainly drains in this direction. On the other side of Whittier Drive here, this is a large wetland system. So, everything's going that way. To kind of hit on something Bob just said there, you know, when we, when we bring this new road in, the cul-de-sacs right here and we're building it up, it essentially now is acting on, on these properties here. It's acting as a dam because now we're taking this water and we're, we're trapping it at that location.
Yeah, I could see that, Greg, yeah.
So, you look at the-
That occurred to me, but you're right.
You look at the, the proposed subcatchments and now we're taking all of that and putting it through a system. So, the runoff now to these properties is significantly reduced in the post-development. You know, area-wise, you're cutting off that much area that's going along. And the other thing that's come up a couple of times, the driveway at the existing house. I think it's our intent at this point, probably to relocate that driveway off of the cul-de-sac, you know, off of the subdivision road. We spoke about that earlier on client night. I think that will be repeated.
Oh, just one other thing, is the tree line you're showing essentially the one that exists today or is it cut back from where that limit of trees now exists?
It, it is cut back slightly. It's cut in about half in this location. It's cut back twenty feet, twenty-five feet. Over here, we kept a little bit thicker of a tree line. It's only cut back about five feet along that location.
And what about on the, on the Curtis Street side of the property, on the eastern side?
The, the tree line that wraps around the back of the house here, there's kind of just a finger that, that would all be removed and then supplemented with the lines.
I was more talking of the, the properties that front on Curtis Street.
Here?
Yeah, to the north, right?
Right here's the existing tree line, so we, we are cutting it back, cutting it back by about forty feet in that location. Forty feet, and we're holding that line straight across. Over here, right now, what exists for a vegetated bumper is about forty feet. We're cutting that down to twenty feet.
Okay. What's the difference in the housing elevations? Though with the elevation of the houses that are, that kind of, in the, in the upper side of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
In what would be like, the, the, no, those, compared to the houses on, on Whittier?
Okay. Well, right now, the houses on Whittier, I, I don't have any of the top of foundations, but for example, the grade along the back property line on those houses is at elevation sixty or sixty-one. These three houses, the basements are at sixty-three, sixty-two, and sixty.
So, the pressure, even though you're filling quite a bit, it, it's, it's a small increase in, in elevation.
Well, but you've lost the whole floor in that. It's the basement elevation relative to the first floor.
Yeah, good point.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was, I was just curious, a lot of it seems to be addressed, but is that a structure or what is that in the back of lot seven there? Is that part of the, the, the constructed wetlands there or is that another subsurface?
Back of lot seven, this here?
Yes.
That was the subsurface septic system for lot seven.
Oh, okay.
These plans don't reflect it, but at the neighborhood meeting, we spoke with, I believe this a butter here and this a butter here about relocating that septic system to the front yard. We did some additional perk tests in our revised plans, are actually going to move that to the front yard, but that's a septic system.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, I saw the others and they all seem to be in front of the plans. I didn't know if that was somehow involved with something else, that's all.
No, the backyard septic, our goal here is to get them all in the, in the front yards.
Is there any lighting?
We had three lamps proposed along the roadway.
Any other questions on the board? Let's open it to the public. I need to know your name, your address, and, and your comment. Mr. Mitchell.
David Mitchell, fifty-two Curtis Street, near Butter here. My question here is a subsurface basin, what's the impact going to be of all my big maple trees along here? Now, you're talking about digging down four or five feet in the ground, the root structure's going to be there. I certainly wouldn't like to see my trees disappear.
I bet that is your homework assignment.
Excuse me?
I just want to make sure that Greg's written it down as his homework assignment. Anyone else? Sir?
Hi, I'm Rick Carroll of forty-five Curtis Street, across the street. My concern is, now I have added traffic there and all that, but I guess the concern is just going to be what it is. But I am concerned about the waters on our side of the street, the pipe, and it's going to have to cut across Curtis Street. Where is that going to cut across? And the noise that that's going to result in, for lack of a better description, the Google, from various traffic that goes back and forth there. I E., the construction project's on Bran Street right now and the one that's on, up at Tilden Road, called Walden Woods. If you drive through there, it's the coco. You know, that's going to affect my house, his house, Mcgannon's house, and the O'Connor's house, which is next door to us. And even the new, the current house that's on the other side. Ultimately, I just want to make sure that that's going to be smooth and all, because that road just got paved like, like two years ago. And it could be very annoying. That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
I think there's a bond that needs to be posted in that case, right? So, we're going to have money from the developer to make sure that that is completely buttoned up and perfect once, once it's completed.
Another question, please?
Sure.
Where exactly is that going to go across the street?
Do we know that, Greg, or is that up to the DPW party or the water?
We, we do, the, the final, final say is up to DPW, but it's primarily in line with the utility pole that's at the center of our, our right-of-way. There's a utility pole there, utility pole five, it's immediately to the right, about four feet to the right of that utility pole.
So, it's pretty much between the O'Connor's house and my house, right?
Yeah, I, I don't have those locations on my plan. I have to look.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Richard Stower, forty, Whittier Drive. And we are, we are here. And at the, the previous meetings that we've had, we've expressed, and I'm going on the previous charts and plans, I appreciate Mr. Vogel's pointing out, I mean, we're at, at the, the bottom of the slope, so this, this drainage is going to go this way. It's been our experience with the Kelly's and, and our house, that in the past, there has been quite a bit runoff. So much so that the previous owner of our house, and we've been in the house for twenty years, built a French drain. And then, within the pa, within the past few years, within the past five years, we, we dug a drain here and then the town put a, a catch basin here because of the runoff. So much so that even still, there's some danger of the water going in along the street into the driveway and into the house of people across the street. So, we're still, we're, we're quite concerned about post-development runoff there. The other, the other concern that we have is, and, and I don't know if Mr. Morse has modified, but in the discussions that we've had before, there were two, there are two basins in this area here. One, one would be a spillover and the second one is, my understanding, would be uncovered. And this, I think Mr. Morse had, had described it as developed wetland in this, in this area. We're concerned about, about this for a couple of reasons. One, well, health and safety. If this is a, a wetland and if the, if it doesn't drain within seventy-two hours, we're concerned about it, and it's uncovered, we're concerned about it being a mosquito breeding ground. And there are a new family here with two young children, and that's, that's another concern we have about safety. My guess would be that in most cases, people who buy property really don't, don't pay too much attention to the outer perimeter of, of the property. This would be an outer perimeter and they may not be aware of the wetlands, the open wetlands. And therefore, I assume also that most of these houses will be for families. So, I'm concerned about the safety about this area, about it being an open, open basin, and also safety because of mosquito breeding grounds. My, my, one other comment, and I have a tangential question, but one other comment is that I would like to see these concerns and some of the concerns that you've already expressed dealt with now. I don't think it is, it is appropriate, proper, even moral for a, a homeowners association to be responsible for, for a situation that occurs after the development. I think these concerns should be addressed and met with by the developers right now as they are being, as the, the property is being developed. Thank you. The tangential question I have is, my, my, my recollection is, is that about, about seven years ago, ten years ago, the town was very concerned about water capacity and that seven years ago or ten years ago, it was at ninety-eight percent of capacity. With these houses, and yes, they're eleven, but the ones off of Stendbeck Place and other, and I was watching on television last night, the, the development of property in, in Greenbush that was talked about at your last meeting, these are adding to the water usage in town. So, my question is, what is being done about, at what was proposed seven to ten years ago about dredging the Heron Brook reservoirs? Thank you.
I'm not sure we can answer your question on the reservoir.
I can.
But, we're very fortunate to-
I can invite anybody interested in such things to come to a City of Water Resources community meeting where in fact they're, we are looking at expanding the yield of the reservoirs for a couple of pieces. And we'll just leave it at that because it is a tangential question and not the jurisdiction of this board ranks this time.
You were going to get it one way or the other, so you volunteered, so I'm more than that.
I, I could tell you were trying to figure out where I was sitting.
No, I knew that you were there, it was just a matter of making sure that you hadn't Any other questions in the public? Sir?
Mike Brennan, in Curtis Street. We also, we undeveloped a flooding lot on the northern end of the property. First comment would be, just from a public safety standpoint, coming up that hill on Curtis Street, where the new access point is proposed is just beyond the apex of where Curtis Street rises. I, I think most people are familiar that we have a DPW at the end of the road with fire trucks going back and forth to refuel. It's quite a busy, you know, during prime time, it's quite a busy area there. I, I just wonder whether there's been any traffic studies for, you know, public safety to be consulted as to how much additional traffic coming onto Curtis Street that's going to cause? Just the nature of the way people drive there, people tend to speed up going up to that apex of that where the rise is. I also worry that there's enough line of sight when people are making turns out of that new access point, especially coming up from the DPW. There could be a pretty heavy flow of traffic in that area. I just, I'm just worried that that's been adequately addressed, especially if you're considering having that other driveway so close. So, it's, it's a, you also have another road within, is that fifty yards or so? You have the, the orchard that comes across there?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, they're pretty close together there, so I do worry from a, a public safety standpoint up there. And then, I guess to, to get back to some of the runoff issues, our, we have no real plans on that undeveloped lot as of now, but I do worry that, you know, the, if the groundwater is at three feet and they're digging this proposed catchment basins and then wetlands back there, how much drainage, if we're already going down to the water table, how much drainage there really is going to be back there? It's kind of a misnomer to say that everything's sloped to that corner because on our side of the property, it does slope away from the proposed development area to Curtis Street. Again, the apex of the street is closer to that, to the proposed road and everything falls down toward the DPW, down to the northern side of, the northern direction of Curtis Street. So, there is flow both towards Whittier and towards Curtis Street from this property. So, I do worry about runoff. I know that we've had problems historically with water coming through the basement. We had to have our basement modified to, you know, with some pumps and, and a catchment system around the inside. Briggans next to us also have, as I can tell from the amount of times that there, some pump is discharging. You know, you can hear that they're constantly spraying. The question also, you know, we're at three feet of groundwater, and I believe this was done in August where the pit's dug. So, I think right now, we're down three and a half inches for the year. I think it was even worse back in August. So, I mean, I think we're at a historically low groundwater right now. So, I do worry that how much real, real dispersion of the water is going to happen back there. So I do worry that how much real dispersion of the water is gonna happen back there. And then the access question, again, you know, can that be adequately maintained back there? So those are just, I guess, the comments that we have. And I assume also that there's gonna be some runoff towards Curtis Street because of the heightened elevation of those front yards of the properties that are on the Curtis Street side. Whittier and Curtis Street could get impacted by runoff, flooded runoff. The other comment I have is that it's only been what's been called barren land most of the year for the last three years. Prior to that, it was maintained as open field by the Blanchards, and it was undeveloped, and it was pretty natural state back there. They would turn it over about every five to seven years and replant with natural grasses. So it's only been about the last three years that it's been farmed, and only more intensively the last two years. So that, and then the final thing I would just say is, I've done a lot of digging of my undeveloped lot for the gardens, and Sandy Loom is a generous comment on that ground structure. I think loam to rock to clay is a little closer to what's really back there. I wish there was more sand, though, like, you know, I won't just made a glance at that property, but... So I do worry about the real subterranean, you know, how permeable that land is back there.
Good comments. Sir?
My name's Tom Quinn, and I live at thirty Whittier Drive. I just have a question. There was some discussion about waivers, about the width of the road, and I think that was to eliminate hardscaping or to give more area for the water to drain or park down. My question pertains to, I'm on Whittier Drive, and I back, I'm on the Whittier Drive side, obviously, but if you shorten or reduce the width of the road, would that give the developers the ability to pull the houses closer to the road and off the back of the property line? Because I think there was a discussion earlier about the elevation of those houses, and I think that they're gonna be, you know, looking out our back window, we're gonna be looking at lighthouses back there, about how high they are, they're gonna have walkout basements. So I was wondering if the width of the road is reduced, if they could pull the houses maybe two feet or whatever, you know, I don't know if there's a setback or what have you like that.
The driver for the road is a right-of-way. So the width of the road is within the right-of-way. So you've got forty, forty feet, so we're talking either twenty-four, twenty-two, or twenty feet within that forty-foot right-of-way. So the right-of-way would be unchanged, so you'd be unable to move the house up, because that's what drives the location.
The setback from the right-of-way.
From the setback. But I think I share your concern, particularly when, the difference in the housing elevation. I guess I'd like to see what that really is. Has Bob explained to me?
Most of the houses they develop now are these very large houses.
Anyone else? John?
I just wanna make sure all the neighbors had a chance to speak first, but I neglected to introduce myself earlier. My name's John Clarkson, Chairman of the Water Resources Committee here in Situate. Greg came to our committee and discussed this project with our committee, and we had a couple of comments. A lot of has been discussed tonight, so I'll try to avoid repetition, but for the most part, our charge is very narrowly to the protection of the water resources of the community to ensure a safe and healthy drinking water supply for the community. And we found that there was, in the end, little or no impact on that. We are concerned about the stormwater runoff as well. While there has been discussion of the storm secur- secur systems and the open wetlands and the easement of access to those open wetlands, we also wanna be sure that there's actual teeth in the ongoing operations and maintenance of those open wetlands, such that there's been reference to the homeowners' association tonight. We wanna be sure that the homeowners' association is actually mentioned in a deed restriction, so that whenever the property changes and the new owner is aware that there's a homeowners' association, and they have responsibilities under that homeowners' association to maintain these systems. We've talked, you know, these wetland systems don't take care of themselves. The reason why there's a discussion of easement is because they do require maintenance, storm securers require maintenance, and that there be a fund managed by the homeowners' association to take care of that maintenance. In fact, I would go so far as to say that the developer should pre-fund the operation and maintenance for a two- to three-year period, so that the homeowners' association doesn't find itself buying a house and then all of a sudden has a responsibility it cannot, it does not have funds to take care of. So the developer should really pre-fund this homeowners' association financial responsibilities for these systems up ahead. And then lastly, and we're gonna get more into this when we talk about our water resource protection districts and water conservation plans in January, but not only for this property, where we can comment as it's in the protection district, but all new development, we hope that the planning board will take efforts to encourage water conservation through low-flow plumbing, the most up-to-date measures for water conservation, so that the capacity of our community water systems are, you know, we do maintain within our current capacity to provide water, and our water management act permits limit, if not prohibit, particularly in a water resource protection district, in-ground sprinkler systems, things of that nature, so that the water can really be preserved for health and safety as opposed to ornamental uses, except for your community.
That's not in-ground, okay.
Good point. Let me dig through a housekeeping point.
Would you mind if I just asked John a follow-up question here?
Go ahead.
When you looked at this in terms of the overall impact, I think somebody brought up the question about the impact on the overall capacity of the town, did you look at it from that perspective at all?
Not this specific project. In my other work, my other worldly ventures, I have actually projected the water use of most of the South Shore community, actually the entire state, out through the year 2035. And because of other situations, other measures that this and many other towns have taken in previous years for water conservation, we are at or near our water management act permanent area, but we're not likely to exceed that, and that's based upon generally accepted population and commercial expansion. So, you know, this specific, you know, I can't speak for this specific, but I can speak for where the Situate population is in 2010 versus what it's expected to be in 2035. We're not expected to have a severe impact on our water demand increasing beyond our ability to supply.
Okay. Thank you.
Housekeeping. Nine o'clock, we have the continuation of public hearing, Cinec Road Public Hearing for three oh five Countryway. That's gonna be immediately continued.
I may have a question on that.
Three oh five? It's gonna be immediately continued.
Yeah, I may have a question.
That allows us some additional time to talk about Curtis Street. Sir?
Just Richard Stower. Process question. So there's not gonna be any vote tonight, there's going to be, these comments are going to be included, and so there'll be a subsequent hearing at which time a vote will take place. Is that correct?
That is correct. What we'll do is, we'll have peer review for the engineer come through, we'll do that. They'll address the questions that have been raised tonight, come back with a revised set of drawings, and then we'll come back up and we'll make sure that all of the issues that have been raised and any subsequent issues that are raised are addressed before we make a vote.
Thank you.
In fact, when we finish tonight, we'll be able to tell you when it's continued too, so you'll have a date and time certain. Any other comments or questions in the public? Greg, you wanna comment on anything so far?
A couple of the things that we'll be looking into. The site, just as the speed controls along Curtis Street, I'll definitely get on that and get that to you. The drainage basins, we had met with a lot of the abutters previous to making a submittal, and our plan here, we feel we can revise just a little bit further, according to Amory's review, to alleviate Mr. Stower's comments. But we did hear Mr. Stower's comments previously, and what we did to try to address those is, our basin used to be turned approximately ninety degrees, and it was closer to his lot line. We did increase our vegetated buffer there from twenty feet to thirty feet. We now tried to make the system a triple redundant system by discharging closer to the road with a swale, so that we're getting some infiltration and some storage in a swale up at the road. And then we did a foray, and then we did a constructed wetland up in the middle of Lot Six. So we were really trying to keep our stormwater up close to the road as opposed to down on his lot line. That was a significant change that we had during our design process. And I do understand the concern regarding mosquitoes that he brings up. And what we did with our design here is the DEP, the DEP really promotes having constructed stormwater wetlands like this. That's considered a low-impact development practice. The downside is mosquito breeding habitat anytime you have standing water. That's a recognized concern. But what we've done is, we've specified plantings that will hopefully promote frogs habitat, it'll promote dragonflies in the areas, which are known predators to mosquitoes. We've also proposed on our plans two bat boxes, one along the backside of the property, one along the back of Mr. Stower's property, to promote bats. So all, you know, mosquito counter effects, and these are all recognized by the DEP for scenarios like this.
Is that a seventy-two-hour drain?
No, because it's a standing wetland we're creating. It's not required to drain.
The overflow basin would be the seventy-two-hour-
Correct.
That's infiltration, right?
The overflow does. Regarding the soil testing, I'm a registered soil evaluator with the state, and the Board of Health had a soil evaluator up here. We conducted over sixty test pits on this property. The soil is loamy sand and sandy loam in the state's eyes. The Board of Health had a witness there for all of the test pits. Testing was done throughout the summer months, it was also done, we had some testing done in September and October. We had test pits ten feet deep that although we didn't see physical groundwater, we wrote groundwater down at three feet, because that's the indicator of where the seasonal high groundwater table is. We do take that into consideration with all of the soil testing we had on the site.
And you can tell that by looking at strata marks in the soil itself?
It's very evident. What we see are called rhodoxymorphic features or models, and what it is, is it's a line almost similar to a bathtub ring, where you have iron in the soil, that when the water comes up during periods of high groundwater, say in April, that water reacts with the air in the soil, and it oxidizes that iron layer. So now, as the water recedes and it's dry, we still get that bathtub ring effect, so it is very obvious. Access to the basins, I understand that concern. I will look into what we can do there, what we tried to provide for the twenty-foot-wide access easements over lawns on the lots. I don't know that this board has required gravel roads down to and around basins in the past, but, you know, a grast accessway, with today's equipment, you know, the mini excavators, the track-style bobcat machines, they're pretty low ground pressure equipment. I'm certainly willing to look into it more. I do recognize our access is limited to those level spreaders. We'll make a concerted effort to get better access to that. We do have berms around the top of the basin that range from twelve feet to fifteen feet in whip. Housing elevations, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to provide a cross-section through the site, you know, with rates from Whittier Drive all the way up to Curtis Street. You can see now the natural land is with respect to the basements and the finished topography, just to clarify that for everyone. Other than that, I understand everyone's concerns here, I'll be taking them into account.
Yeah, and I think we've worked with Rich and the language on the homeowners' association to get stronger. I think the other thing we had, the sec triangle, you mentioned the list of waivers?
Yes.
And I guess I'd ask, if you'd come up with a way that, other than us telling you how to do it, to maintain that buffer, property buffer, the tree buffer? Then I think you still got the question of Mr. Mitchell's trees, maple trees in particular. What, and the level spreaders, is that an annual maintenance effort? How are those maintained?
It would be an annual maintenance, making sure that you're not getting any sediment buildup or erosion around them, making sure that, you know, they're free to discharge to the surface of the ground, you're not getting, you know, leaves piled up, and you're not getting any trees establishing-
It's a visual inspection.
It's a visual inspection. They're not subsurface, they're open.
Yeah, no, no, no. Because there should be probably a statement, an annual statement somewhere requested in homeowners' association, since there says that should be done. Can you report that to the cleaning board? Is that where we have him, Laura? Report?
Yeah.
I think that's my list. Anything else from the board?
Laura, you mentioned a particular tree, I believe, in one of your comments?
Yeah, I think it's a thirty-inch tree out there.
Is it like right in the middle of the development or-
It's right in the middle of the road, probably.
Yeah, right. There is a, there, Mike Brennan, the abutter at the undeveloped lot, there is a copse of trees right in the middle of where the, I don't know the exact diameter of the tree, but there's a copse of trees which they never formed because of the rocks in the area.
Yeah.
It's right in the middle of where that drainage base is.
Right. We have an area where you can see that. Okay. Well, if there's any chance of saving specimen trees like that, it would be worth looking into. With this much build, you know, three walls, that sort of thing, have a limited amount of use. It's a couple of feet you might make, and if it's more than that, you won't.
Okay. I missed the location of that particular floor.
Laura, did you, I'm sorry?
She pointed out that thirty-inch tree, the one-
Oh, the cops we're talking about, that's, it's actually on the photo here. But I don't see, I guess we might be talking about this stuff down in here, but, you know, yeah, I don't know if you're gonna make that. I would not.
Okay, so before we continue this, make sure there's any other questions in the public? Ma'am?
Yes, I have one question. I came a little late. I'm Alice Doherty, four seventy Countryway in Situate. I heard some discussion about two driveways on the Countryway. Was that something that was brought up?
Do you wanna address that?
This project proposes no driveways to Countryway.
Yeah, I think we were speaking about-
On Curtis.
Yeah, there's only access for this project to Curtis Street.
So we're gonna continue. The time and date to continue is?
It is February thirteenth at eight forty-five.
Is the twenty-third is not available with a continuance on fifty Countryway?
Well, we were talking about that a little bit earlier, and- Well, we were talking about that a little bit earlier and we've got a workshop on the zoning changes for the Water Resource Protection District which are really kind of significant and that's at eight twenty.
We could fight it out outside if you like.
You can go rock, paper, scissors, but I think...
There's a hearing at seven thirty, there's an immediate continuance at eight fifteen, and then there's this workshop beginning at eight twenty, which I would expect to go for maybe longer.
Or longer.
Okay.
Just giving some of the people that, you know, will be very interested in talking on some of those issues, I think.
You can wear your pajamas.
Yeah.
So that brings it to about nine twenty and it just seemed like that would be kind of late to really be starting like a whole substantive discussion on something. So that brings it to February thirteenth.
So can I speak for just a moment? I just wanted to thank you very much. Well, when I met with Greg earlier today, he did mention the potential date of February thirteenth and it just seemed like extraordinary length of time to wait for kind of an opportunity to come back to the board and speak to these concerns and issues. He did have an applicant who was on for the night of, I think, January twenty-third and he had spoken with the applicant about giving us an opportunity to kind of take his time, time-space and he would then come in on the twenty-third of, I'm sorry, the thirteenth of February. If you would give us that consideration, we truly appreciate it. I think our application was submitted, the Form C back in October. We are, again, I think, have met many times with Greg in terms of being responsive and trying to get the information you folks need. I think we can turn around these comments in a very timely fashion to Mr. Vernon of Amory and again, all I can do is ask and request that you give us consideration for that date in January. Thank you.
I mean, it wasn't a decision made without, no, you don't have to stand up. It was not a decision made without any thought. I mean, Laura and I spent a fair amount of time going over the schedule with what we've got, the workload that we've got, the timeframe that we've got to do it, right, which kind of precludes us from doing that. So that's, unfortunately, that's what it is. We've got multiple projects in front of us as well as the commitments that we have to make for the town meeting articles, right, which take up a fair amount of time.
Just ask for a consideration.
And there's a couple of holidays in there too, which cuts down on productivity, I think. Not for this board. So we have a motion?
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan for Blanchard Farm Estates at forty Curtis Street until February thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, at eight forty-five P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for the continuance at three oh five?
Can I ask a process question on this motion for continuance?
Sure.
So if you have a motion of continuance, that means that no business and no votes regarding the project takes place, right?
No, not tonight.
Yet there was a motion of continuance at your November twelfth meeting on this same property, okay? Yet somehow, in that timeframe between that motion of continuance, the November twenty-sixth meeting when it was not on the agenda and now a motion of continuance tonight, there was a decision to accept the tributary flagging in a manner different from what had been discussed with this committee before. And so I just wonder how that would happen.
I don't know what he's talking about.
I missed something.
I don't know what you're talking about.
The only thing...
Three oh five.
Eric isn't here, so Richard isn't here, so if you start getting into these things,
We shouldn't, yeah.
Okay.
Isn't that what you're talking about now? You're now moving to continue three oh five, right?
Yes.
I want to make a motion.
And last time we were told it was going to be a continuance on three oh five, yet something happened. And something happened when, you know, without the benefit of our committee and the public being...
No.
No, we just continued it.
We continued, we continued to three oh five and we had the meeting on three oh five.
Last, the public was... Last I knew, there was an agreement that there would be a kind of a joint review of the tributary and that somehow the tributary had not been accepted. And I'm just wondering how that happened.
We had a meeting.
But I was just told that it was continued the last meeting.
We continued it to a date certain, which was the last meeting. We held that meeting, right, and then we made the votes that we made at that meeting.
Okay. Somehow, I was under the impression that it was going to be in the November twelfth meeting and that it was going to be immediately continued. And then it didn't show up on the November twenty-sixth agenda. So I'm just confused. As well as, I'm here to express the disappointment of the Water Resources Committee that the agreement that I thought we had between the two committees for the tributary designation was not filed through law. And in fact, I have something filed with the town clerk saying that the discussion on three oh five I thought was going to be continued. So I'm just confused.
Yeah, I think some may be terminology. Continued means we're going to bring it to a third time certain, doesn't mean that we're not going to make a decision at that point in time.
Right.
So we continued it to February. There'll be no discussion on it until February when the meeting comes in. At that point, it may be, as three oh five was tonight, immediately continued to another subsequent...
But if something is immediately continued, how was the decision made regarding the project?
But I think, I don't know that it was immediately continued.
Which meeting are we talking about? I'm completely, I think I need a timeline here.
We've got the continuances, but I don't know whether these continuances were immediate or not.
Oh, so, you know, I apologize. I'm sure part of it is just my getting used to feeling, you know, that I'm new to come and watch these meetings. I had the impression that the November twelfth meeting was going to be immediately continued and then later I found, so I didn't attend and later I found out that there was a change on the planning board's treatment on the tributary question. So if I made a mistake, I apologize, but I have been led to believe that it was going to be an immediate continuance.
No, we just, we continued to and then we had a discussion.
It was actually November fourteenth, was it?
Yeah.
Fourteenth.
I think there was a lot of discussion about what to do.
And I think with regard to your comment about the agreement that we had, I think if you, you know, make sure that you get a copy of the minutes, but I think there was more than due diligence that was done in coming back up in the discussion at tributary. I think, what was it, three?
Yeah, we included a hydro geo.
I think you were, you were at that meeting, John, when there were the three experts.
Right.
Brad Holmes.
But you had somebody here representing you. There was somebody here from the Water Resources Commission then.
Yeah.
There was?
A woman?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Forget her name, I apologize for that.
It might have been Martha.
All right. Well, then I apologize of my bad record keeping, but I thought I had then informed that it was going to be immediately continued and that's why I didn't come. But, hey, you want to send me this one? I appreciate you stirring me up.
But I would appreciate your comments if you read the minutes in terms of what I consider to be due diligence on the tributary.
Understood.
So I have a motion?
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan. Flexible open space special permit in Scenic Road Public Shade Tree Hearing for White Ash Farm Lane at three oh five Countryway until January ninth, two thousand fourteen, at eight thirty P.M. And to continue the time for action until February twenty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to send a note to both Eric and Richard to make sure that they're current on Curtis. They need to... And do they have to do the same for three oh five continuance?
No.
So it's covered. Next item on the agenda, I assume that this is why you're here, Form A Plan for two fifty-four Beaver Dam Road. The applicant is Patricia Wallace Bailey.
Again, Greg Morse, this is a Form A Plan. Intersection Beaver Dam Road and James Way. There was an existing house here, you see, shown as Lot thirty-two. We're proposing a new lot line. This creates a new lot, Lot thirty-three. This is in the R twenty zoning district. Both lots comply with the minimum twenty thousand square foot area. We're both in excess of that, twenty-two thousand square foot, one. And Lot thirty-three, twenty-five thousand square feet. It's all upland area. They both have a minimum frontages, unapproved ways. Lot thirty-three has a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage and width along Beaver Dam Road. We have in excess of a hundred and sixty feet along James Way remaining for Lot thirty-two.
Lot thirty-two is, everything conforms on Lot thirty-two?
Lot thirty-two, the house is in existing nonconforming with respect to the front yard setback. The new lot line complies with the setbacks on that.
Laura?
It's a Form A Plan, so really the main thing that the planning board looks at is the frontage and the access. There's a cottage on the second lot, which I'm not sure if it's really considered a house or some kind of an outbuilding, but there's going to be a stamp on the plan saying that the endorsement doesn't mean that it necessarily complies with zoning, so that covers, you know, that covers a lot of possibilities. So I don't see any reason why the plan can't be endorsed.
Questions on the board? Motion on the board?
Okay, we have a motion.
I move to endorse, as approved under the subdivision control law, not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts stamped by William J. McGovern, professional land surveyor of Morse Engineering Company. For applicant Patricia Wallace Bailey and owner Glenn Wallace, dated November eleventh, two thousand thirteen, as the division of land is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has access and frontage as required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Beaver Dam Road.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is the Form A Plan for one hundred and five Old Oakin Bucket Road.
The plan we submitted is about six or seven years ago. Land Board signed, made our plan to create six Form A lots along Beaver Dam. One of them was Lot Two. I saw the plan this evening, was picking Lot Two, which was fifty-one thousand square feet. What he's doing there is it requires a lot area for a house lot that's on forty thousand square feet and he's decided to keep this rather than taking easement over it. Lot Two ways under agreement to be purchased. We have permits in conservation for houses out there and the person purchasing this size lot decided they didn't want the fifty-one thousand square feet, so the purpose of this is to take Lot Two and divide it into two, one being a buildable lot and this would be added to the remaining area of Beaver Dam.
So it's not part of Lot One?
No. We just show Lot One for permission purposes. That was created a couple of years ago.
So is Two B, does it include all of this?
No, this is Lot Two B. It's only eleven thousand square feet. It's right here, comes out, comes out along this line. Down here, there's a Z line, which means this is going to go back to the box. Now, what he'll do is restore sand here and sand the box. Those are new boxes, just replanted.
And Laura, can it come?
There's a lot of land area here, most of it's not buildable, it's bog and there've been a number of plants over the years. At one point, the town was looking at trying to purchase some of this land for a well that didn't wind up happening. I guess the Conservation Commission has approved some, you know, some applications here.
There are five lots and those are still valid.
Those are still valid.
Are they in here? Those five lots are here somewhere?
Well, there's Lot One.
This is...
There's Lot Two, there's Three, there's a Four and then there's a, there's a Fifth one, I think, on the other side.
Yeah, so I think this is the main one that would be a buildable lot. I'm assuming Two B, they wouldn't...
Oh, this isn't buildable, I mean...
This one's not buildable either, right?
Yes, it is. It actually goes back and flares out. There's a big area way back here.
But that's already in place?
Yes.
So this one is just cutting up what was like that?
Just taking Lot Two and making this way, be out of it.
So I think Two A is a little bit tight to build on, but apparently we have the permission to build on it, so it's got the frontage, it's got access from Old Oakin Bucket Road.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, I move to endorse, as approval under the subdivision control law, not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts stamped by Paul J. Maravito, professional land surveyor of Ross Engineering Company. For applicant Pope's Pond Cranberry Company, Inc., dated October eleventh, two thousand thirteen, as the division of land is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has access and frontage. Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Old Oakin Bucket Road.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
If I don't sign them tonight, I'll sign them tomorrow.
You need this one?
Do we need this one? Yeah. And I need the other ones, if you got that.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, me too.
We're getting closer to Bob's motion. Uh, watch him. That's what it's for. And then here is the one from Beaver Dam. I need Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam. You don't leave Marshall. Something else. Change of views.
That was change of views, yeah, yeah, that didn't need...
Okay, so we got two minutes left. Liaison reports and town planner report. Want to go first, town planner?
No, you two were at the Economic Development Committee, so, and I heard it was very interesting.
Yeah.
Very productive.
Well, they were, I think Bill will correct me where I missed stuff here, but MAPC, the planner, was presenting the, sort of the conditions that they've found. They weren't presenting necessarily recommendations at this point in time. But they had some interesting elements that they laid out as they went through this and let me just think about probably the best way to present this. I thought there were some sort of key takeaways from the meeting. One is that there's very little undeveloped land when you take away all of the town land and the open space land. It came down to something like two hundred fifty-five acres of land that was available for...
the open space land, um, it came down to something like two hundred and fifty-five acres of land that was available for development in the town.
What lands and.
You take away lands out and all that kind of stuff, so there's really not much at all, and they had, they had a very interesting, uh, diagram that showed three A in particular and the fact that there was almost no land on three A to develop. And, and, you know, that it wasn't an area that they considered to be an area for focus for economic development because of that.
Does that take into account the zoning, in other words, a lot of it's sewn residential? But you're saying you're regardless of the zoning?
It's developed, yeah, a lot of it's developed right up to the road.
And it's simply not developable, period, for other reasons, not, not having to do with zoning.
Not having to do with zoning, mostly having to do with a lot of it's been developed. And while you might not, it may not appear that way as you drive down the road, there's actually.
It's in the ownership of somebody who's.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you work your way up from, uh, Town Water Department, you get Town Water Department, and you get the, the baseball field, then you've got housing, then you've got.
Situate Trail.
You've got Situate Trail coming back up, I've got some more housing coming out.
Mm-hmm.
Then I get the reservoir, then I come back up and I get Dr.'s Hill. It's, it's up that area, come there, and then as I come down from Dr.'s Hill, I got the Deer Common.
Yeah.
I get Deer Common, and then I got the church.
Yeah, so, so the takeaway there is that while there's been a lot of discussion about there'd be development there, there really isn't the ability to develop there. And, and that the focus that they had were on the, on the, well, I'll call them the four sort of districts, you know, North Situate, Green Bush, The Harbor, and, and Hummerock, although Hummerock, there's very limited opportunity there as well. And they had, they had sort of zeroed in on the, the three components of economic activity in town. One was sort of maritime-based, the second was really tourism-based, and the third was what they called local retail economy. Basically, people locally driving the economy, if you will, and that there wasn't a lot of other kind of economic activity. And Situate, they had some interesting maps that showed how Situate is, is really sort of isolated from the three A, you know, the three A quarter, essentially Cohasset and Marshfield have sort of captured the, the commercial activity there, and the, the major commercial activity is all along Route Three. I mean, they had a very nice sort of layout map that showed just how all that, you know, development followed Route Three. So we're the furthest away from all of that.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty feet.
Right, um, so their idea was that, you know, that, um, the focus would probably have to be on the three districts, the North Situate, Green Bush, and, and the Harbor District, and that there's gonna, there's opportunities for incremental commercial growth there. But it's not huge, there's no big, sort of big silver bullet that, that would drive economic development in town. So we're gonna have to go after it sort of incrementally. And, uh, they, they did have some, some areas of discussion, sort of about what we should be looking at. Green Bush being one where the key being, how do we create sort of a center at Green Bush? It's, it's sort of spread out and, and, um, there's no real there there at Green Bush. And is, is there a way to create that possibly by bringing in, you know, the, the M B T A parcel? Uh, but thinking about it sort of holistically too, and, and thinking about how you create that center, and then create, uh, Green Bush in some ways as, uh, as the, the gateway to Situate Harbor as well. Kind of, sort of more delineated that way. Not sure how that works at this point, but, um, these were concepts and ideas that they were throwing out, and I, I think there's a lot of work to do there still. But I think the main thing is they, they had hit sort of the key elements of the town itself and, and what was possible. And, and, you know, they looked at population growth and said the only projected segment, age segment of population growth in Situate over the next ten years or whatever it is, and sixty-five plus, right?
Yeah, the whole, the whole.
Gilby!
It's just all marching on, you know? And the largest economic sector in town is kind of the combination of education, healthcare, and social services. That was the largest, you know, sort of job sector, if you will, in town. And, and, you know, a lot of what they recommended was really focused on how do you, how do you make Situate more of a tourism location? And talked, talked about things like, is there a way to give visitors more access to beach? You know, to beach activity, because most of it right now is, you know, limited to residents. Which is an interesting idea, and they were talking about ideas of maybe tying it into, uh, you know, local merchants who have people use restaurants or whatever, um, they have the ability to give a day pass to somebody or something like that, but. Some interesting ideas, I think they still have a lot of work to do, but, um, I, I thought that those were kind of the takeaways, you know, that, that, uh, there's no, there's no one big thing. And, um, and, you know, we're gonna have to work at it sort of incrementally and a little differently. They did have a sort of, I thought it was an interesting idea about sort of creating a resort kind of concept over at Widow's Walk, where, you know, you might have a small hotel or something like that. That's one thing they, they identified in Situate is that we essentially have, was it forty?
Forty.
Forty hotel rooms?
Forty or forty-four.
Yeah. And, you know, the surrounding area, there's another five hundred if you get out to Hingham and, you know, other areas. So as a tourism destination, they thought, you know, that's a piece of if you're trying to drive more, more tourism into Situate, you might need to have more hotel rooms. And one of the concepts was to make Widow's Walk essentially a little bit more of a resort area and a destination area, basically, with a hotel to go with the golf course and maybe other things that could be.
The riverfront maybe is part of it.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot to sort of think about there, and it was, again, these were all sort of, uh, I think, very conceptual ideas. Nothing's obviously cast in stone, and, and most of what they want to really report back to the, to the Board of Selectmen is sort of this, this data about, here, here's the baseline, you know, here's what we know about Situate, here's what it looks like, here's how it compares to other towns around us, uh, you know, that kind of thing, so. I thought they did a pretty good job.
Yeah, I think they built a pretty solid base.
Mm-hmm.
And then when we went into the conceptual, I think, yeah, but the base that they, they presented in terms of,
Yep.
all the statistics and that was pretty amazing.
They had a, they had a nice map that had the, you know, for Situate sort of had the one mile, the three mile, and the five mile radius that they drew. And sort of the one mile is, is sort of the neighborhood economy, if you will. The one, the three mile becomes sort of, in the three mile radius, it's a convenient drive to go somewhere. And then the five mile radius, if you're on that or past it, um, you're probably going somewhere else. So in other words, destinations outside of Situate are the, are just as easy to get to as to, you know, some of our, our key commerce centers. So they, they had drawn those radii sort of around the town, which I thought was pretty interesting as well. So a lot to do, I think they're presenting to the Board of Selectmen.
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah. And that will be an update, and then they'll talk about phase two. I think Bill mentioned, and I mentioned, that, you know, we'd like to make sure we get their feedback on the Green Bush area in particular, because that was one that, that had come before us on the, on the overlay district.
Right.
And, um, that may, may take longer than, than it, uh, that it may be long enough out that we won't be able to make the, the May, you know, the Springtown meeting. But we're gonna have to let them sort of drive that, that timeline.
Yeah, they're gonna be presenting to the Selectmen on the seventeenth, and I'm thinking that probably after that, some of the material that they have can go on the website, so that if there are businesses that are, you know, just remotely considering locating in Situate, at least they would have access to the kind of information that would help them figure out if they can, you know, make a go of it in Situate.
Yeah, they pointed that out, is that, um, part of, part of what we probably needed to do is develop, sort of a marketing program that includes, you know, here's the, here's the full brochure on how you permit a business in Situate, but also.
The how do I do it book?
Right, but also market in other locations as, for Situate as a destination, like, you know, particularly the boating community from the North Shore, that Situate's a, a day trip type of kind of location to get more activity into the town and that kind of stuff. So I think a piece of what they're talking about is, is maybe investing in, in some, some targeted marketing, you know, for the town, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I would rather it go on the website after it's been sort of brushed up and, and marketed.
Yeah.
As opposed to just the raw data, you know, at this point, and whatever we put out, there ought to be attractive and not just provide factual data, but, but give some incentives or some reason for people to think about coming to Situate.
Mm-hmm. I think you're talking about the, the report information?
I was talking about the, especially the market study, because when, um, a couple of the, the developers, you know, not even, well, one of them is, is local, but they've done, you know, a lot of big development in, you know, in eastern Massachusetts, came in to talk to me about the M B T A property, they were looking for information like that.
Hmm, yeah, sure.
So I did say, well, it's, you know, it's gonna be ready. So, um, and that also brings up the question of with those village business overlay district changes, since the T is really looking actively to market that property, whether you want those in place before they auction it, so that there's some feeling of, you know, what could be done with it.
Mm-hmm.
This one set of developers was, um, you know, I only talked to one, and I put them onto, you know, talking to Tricia rather than, you know, talking to me, um, because I'm, you know, she kind of drives the bus. But they were interested in mixed use and some type of transit oriented development, so.
Sure.
That's the kind of thing that I think would probably be a way to maximize the value, you know, the assessed value.
Yeah, what, that reminds me, they had one other slide that I thought was quite interesting where they took sort of the current inventory of, of homes in Situate and sort of did the pie chart on them, and eighty-four percent of Situate homes are single-family homes, and then there's, the remaining sixteen percent is split up between condos and some apartments and stuff. And then they sort of put an overlay on that based on where they see the market trends going in terms of demands for kinds of housing. And, and when they did that, the growth was all in the, in the condo, in the apartments, and a little more on the affordable mixed-use side, and sort of the pie chart said, you know, if, if you reached, attained what we think the market demand looks like, you'd end up at like fifty-seven percent of, uh, single-family homes.
You go from like eighty-four to fifty-seven percent.
Right, of course, we don't have any, we don't really have zoning that supports any of that and, and, you know, all of that, so. But it, they did it as sort of, I think, a thought exercise about, you know, the, the kinds of demands for housing out there today are not the same as they were five, ten years ago, you know, and, and. So that was their way of illustrating, you know, might, you might not ever get to that, but maybe we ought to be focusing on bringing more of that kind of development, and certainly they were talking about, you know, one of our biggest assets are the two T stations, and, and, you know, building around those.
Yeah, yeah, that was their thinking, is that we really don't have three A that really is productive to us, but we do have, unique to us is that we have two train stations.
Yeah, we're the only community, yeah.
And if you look at it, they're basically a polar for, for the, for the town, one and each end.
Well, when I find out what time their presentation to the Selectmen is gonna be, I'll let you all know, so.
Okay.
If you wanna come, I think the E D C will be at that meeting.
Yeah, they, they said they would.
In, you know, good numbers, and I think they're also gonna use it, um, as a little bit of a forum for what they've been doing, and, you know, that they've been making some progress.
Yeah, they did, yeah, they definitely did some nice work here.
The other thing, uh, that I wanted to touch on involving that same Selectmen's meeting is that's the meeting where we need to tell them which articles are going forward for the warrant, because that's the meeting where they close the warrant for the April Town meeting. So for right now, I, I don't think we need to have all the language all worked out, but for right now, we've got the medical marijuana, we've got the water resource protection district, and I'm gonna keep a placeholder for that village business, just assuming, you know, we're forward with that.
Yeah, we should. See if we can accomplish that. Didn't sound like they were moving too fast on it, though.
No. I mean, I think the, the, the T may present an opportunity, the T property may present an opportunity, but I don't wanna go back and, and, and extend it once, so, and then extend it again, or, or change, change it again.
No, you know, I, I don't think that you do wanna do that, but I think that when he makes his presentations to the Selectmen, he's, I don't think he's gonna refer to the T property, but I think he is gonna refer to that Driftway, New Driftway intersection as being sort of, you know, the coming center of Green Bush, so. You know, so I think he's, he's kind of on that track. And I also just wanted to give out, I got the, um, Hingham's Medical Marijuana Bylaw, and it's, um, similar to what we've been doing in a lot of respects, but it does include a little bit more on the, um, information on the security system and, um, the personnel and so on, and I think that would probably be good to include just because the police are gonna have to be, um, watching these pretty closely because of all the cash coming and going, and, um, they're gonna need to have contact information at these places, and also to really have the layout of the place and, and, um, understand how the security system works and, and all of that.
Do we have any in the top one hundred that are left?
No, we don't, yeah, so. So I don't think we're gonna be getting one anytime soon, but.
I think you're right.
Yeah, our special attraction, so, um.
Get high on Situate. T-shirts, I can see it.
So that was one thing that I had, the other thing is just that we are, uh, I am working on our budget, which is due February twelfth, and it's, it's gonna be more or less level funded from what we had last year. The main change being that I'm gonna try to get someone who will help with administering the flood elevation grants, because we're gonna have a lot of those this year, and I should be able to get the money reversed by FEMA. So hopefully, um, you know, I can get that to work in an acceptable way around here. And other than that, we have right now about three thousand dollars for some form of technical assistance, and I had thought, you know, possibly of using it for the two Larrys for the, um, village business zoning, but then, you know, that did seem a little bit pricey just for the one meeting, so we, you know, Bill and I had talked about that and kind of decided not to do that. But, um, some other things I was thinking about were the kinds of graphics that they had when, um, Adam Brodsky and Paul Dunnevin came in with the, the redevelopment, the South Shore Auto Parts. If, maybe we should look at, try to get, you know, some more, um, you know, some more work like that done on maybe just, you know, maybe not like a specific parcel like that, but maybe something, you know, generic that people could use to show, to show this development and how, you know, the height and all these other parameters, but just to show in a really professional way.
For the whole overlay district.
Yeah, yeah.
That, I think that might be useful.
So, I mean, I'm thinking of.
Just, just to have a vision for it, yeah.
Oh, good.
When you show the whole district, you'd have to be, uh, twenty thousand feet, and you wouldn't really see much detail. That's what you have in mind, I mean, it could.
Well, just sort of a, a, um.
Maybe a couple of views, street views, so to speak, that's what I'm thinking.
Maybe a better, you know.
I'm thinking the sort of, you know, one, one spot and then a second spot with like two street views that might at least give you a sense of what it would look like.
Plan with arrows to show where the, you know, where you're standing and where you're looking, that, that would work.
Oh, good, I, I can get in touch with the, um, with the architect on that team with, um, Larry Glustone and see if maybe he can do something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and it, all these things, you know, none of it is cheap, it's always a little more than you think it's gonna be, so, you know, I will definitely shop it around and see if I can, you know, get a good rate. The other thing I think we really need to talk about is we've got this tremendously busy schedule for January and February, and we put out the R F P for the consulting engineer. We got, um, we've got a couple firms that are interested, I think, in coming in where Beals and Thomas won't be there. But, you know, and then Bill and Kevin Cafferty and I are gonna do initial interviews, so hopefully we'll winnow it down to maybe one or two that, you know, the rest of the board. So hopefully, we'll winnow it down to maybe one or two that, you know, the rest of the board can, can talk to. But I think we thought there would be at least some time to talk to them on one of the meetings. Um, so, it's, it's kind of a big squeeze.
I'm almost not opposed to coming back up and sitting there and having a, a brief meeting to sit down. And, and that's the only thing that's done on that night.
Like a add a meeting?
Like an add a meeting.
Yeah, I, I could do that.
A whole, a whole different...
Yeah.
So basically, that would be the only thing.
Might be better.
I wouldn't do a four main, I wouldn't do...
Okay, yeah, we won't tell anyone about this meeting, right? We won't tell a soul that the planning boards, of course, were on TV, but...
Participating.
But I mean, if, if that's, the only thing that we did, and that was expressly intended, that's the only thing we did for that, that meeting. And I think it would, would be focused, and I think it would be, I think we could do it probably within an hour, maybe an hour and a half.
Okay, okay, good. Well, I will shop around a couple of dates and see, you know, what, what dates are good. The other thing for us all to talk about is Forty Curtis, if you wanted to have a site visit over there.
I would. I mean, I'd, I'd be open to that anyway.
Our Saturday is good? We did a Saturday with two fourteen clap.
Sure.
Is that...
Mm-hmm.
Early is better.
Yeah, early morning is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. Okay, I'm gonna look for a Saturday. And does anybody have any burning desire to put anything special in our budget for next year?
Cool.
To put you on the spot, buy a coffee, okay? I'm kinda just checking, I mean, we'll...
Stipends for the board members?
What, what are we doing, more money?
Send it, so, okay. So if you think of anything or you have any thoughts on things you think we should be doing, email me in the next, you know, couple days, maybe by like Monday.
Can we get access to like wireless here?
That would be an ideal thing.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that, and I think it was a security issue that the IT didn't want to have access to, you know, wireless access here.
But I mean, they could put you in, they could put you in as a guest that keeps, protects their whole network.
Yeah, well, I'll ask them. I mean, they, they've been changing a lot of features on the system. We've got the new website, we've got, you know, some new...
They had trouble with the website, the thing, physically getting in.
You couldn't even get into it?
Couldn't get into it. And I just, I didn't know whether maybe it was working on it or something. I don't remember what it was, it's probably an eyeball hour, but...
Yeah, maybe, maybe it was...
Maybe they were working on it, because later I was able to get in. But that wouldn't be an unreasonable thing to have, to be able to, to wifi it.
Okay.
So Bob has a motion?
Who would be?
Second.
Hold up a favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Gable.
Thank you.